Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 24, 2020 meeting of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. My name is Kathryn Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. Please note that this meeting is being conducted remotely and is being broadcast live on Channel 18, and will also be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. I do need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It's all right to record the meeting, but I do need to be notified. I'll give you a chance to respond. Thank you. So before we get started, I'm going to read some points that are particularly relate to the remote nature of this meeting. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A 18 and the governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID is 699-998-351-POUND. That's 699-998-351-POUND. You may also join the meeting by computer, by Microsoft Teams, by clicking the link that is on the agenda posted on the town website. And despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we'll post a recording of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Also, if your phone becomes inadvertently muted, you can press pound six. So a couple of just technical points. Because, especially because we're functioning remotely, meeting remotely, all the proceedings have to be quite formal. There can be only one person speaking at a time, and that will be the person recognized by the chair. I cannot necessarily see the raise hand function. So please, when you want to be recognized, mention your name, and I'll ask you to speak. And then please repeat your name before you begin speaking so that we can always clearly identify all speakers. If you have joined us by telephone, repeat your name as well as the last four digits of your phone number. And also, I would ask anyone who is not speaking, could you kindly turn off your video? If you're joined by computer and mute your microphones? And for anyone joining by phone, could you kindly mute your phone? This helps with the clarity of the broadcast. So everybody turn off your videos and mute your microphones. As soon as I finish these points, I will begin with a roll call of all board members. Then after the discussion by the board for any matter, I will also ask if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak or has questions or comments. Again, when I call on you, kindly repeat your name and the last four digits of your phone number for identification. And of course, the planning board votes are all taken by roll call, even our comments we do in a roll call fashion. And at the end of the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting with a verbal confirmation noting the time. So those are some of the technical points. So let's begin with the roll call of the Planning Board members. Art Sprou, are you present?
Art Sprou, present.
Thank you. Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Thank you. Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, present.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
Thank you. Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, present.
Thank you. Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, present.
Thank you. And I'm Kathryn Halpern, and I am also present. All right. So let's move on to our first agenda item. It may note on your agenda that we're looking at minutes for July 27 and August 17. August 17 minutes, we will need to postpone till next meeting, but we do have the July 27 minutes. And I'll go through and call the board members' names. And can you tell me if you have any amendments or comments for the July 27 minutes? Arthur Sprou.
Art Sprou, no comments, no amendments.
Thank you. Warren Chain. Warren Chain, you might be on mute.
Yep, I'm trying to get off mute. Warren Chain, I have no comments and no amendments.
Thank you. Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, no comments, no revisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, no comments.
I'm sorry.
I said the minutes are good.
Good. Thank you. Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, no comments.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, no comments, no amendments.
And I also have no comments and no amendments. So I may have a motion to approve the minutes of our July 27 meeting.
It's Warren Chain. Don't move.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Sprou.
Art Sprou, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Kathryn Halpern. I also approve the minutes from July 27. Next item on our agenda is an approval not required. And this is for 196 and 210 Wilford Road. Do I have a presenter for this matter? I do. Thank you.
Yes.
Phil, could you introduce yourself, please?
Surely, yes. Hi, Phil Sholomiti with Ryder and Wilcox. The last four digits of the phone are 8312. And I'm here tonight with an approval not required plan. It's prepared for Christopher Sloan, Isabel Stark, Mary Ann Gale, and John Bassett. The property is situated on the north side of Wilford Road and is zoned R20. The plan describes an equal area exchange. The two triangular smaller shaped lots, Lot 5B and 6A2, are to be exchanged with each lot containing 642 square feet of buildable upland, as noted in the area chart. As the plan notes states, Lot 6A2 is not a buildable lot, but is to be combined with Lot 5A. Lot 5B is not a buildable lot, but is to be combined with Lot 6A1. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. I'm going to ask if there's any questions from the board. I could do this in roll call fashion, but for the sake of brevity, I'll just ask you to state your name and say that you have a question for board members. Any questions? Any comments? All right. I think what our vote would be, I would ask for a motion to endorse the A&R Plan entitled Division of Land in Chatham, prepared for Christopher Sloan, Isabel Stark, Mary Ann Gale, and John Bassett, prepared by Philip Odysseus Sholomiti dated April 1. Do I have a motion to endorse?
Bob Dubus, I beat you. Bob Dubus will move to endorse this transfer of land.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
A second. Tom Gagin.
Thank you. So we'll do a roll call vote. Art Sprou.
Art Sprou, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Kathryn Halpern, and I also approve the endorsement of this approval not required. Thank you so much, Phil.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. And let's see. One moment, please. I've misplaced my agenda. Oh, yes. So the next, my apologies. I just, my agenda just got buried. Next item on our agenda is the bond release for Bailey's Path. And we have actually from the applicant received a request for a continuance on this item. And if you'll bear with me one moment, I'll call that up. One moment, please. So this is the letter requesting a continuance, and this is from Susan Ladue at Eastward. Dear members of the board, Eastward Companies would like to reschedule our meeting with you to Monday, October 26, 2020, to discuss the release of the security that was posted in 2004 for the completion of the required subdivision work at Bailey's Path. Thank you for your consideration of our request. If you should have any questions or need additional information, please let me know. So if, what I would need would be a motion to continue this matter to the October 26 meeting, and this is at the request of the applicant.
Art Sprou will make that motion.
Thank you so much, Arthur. And may I have a second? Thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Sprou.
Art Sprou, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Kathryn Halpern, and I also approve. All right. So let's move to our next item on the agenda. And this is an amended site plan review for 512 Main Street. And this is for proposed construction of a facility management building on the grounds of the Wayside Inn. And I think we have several presenters for this matter. Mr. Ford, are you going first? Will you be starting?
Do you want me to start, Michael?
Whoever you would like.
David Oppenheim. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, this is a quick summary. This is what we call a facilities management building. It is basically a two-car garage with a room over it. The reason we're doing this is, as, we've been thinking about something like this for quite a while, and it became apparent this year that we need more storage for guests and for ourselves. Many of you don't realize the rear building on this property was built when we, in the days when you did your height restriction from the bottom of the footing. So we only have a six-and-a-half-foot cellar in the rear building. And so we have needs to store things like lawn furniture, garden equipment, snow blowers, things like that, which right now we sometimes have to just cover up with some sort of a cover, things like that. The other thing that occurred this year is, starting in July 4th, we usually have people that come down with a few bicycles. July 4th weekend, we had 27 bicycles with guests. And they don't ride the $100 Schwins that I used to, and they all want their bicycles protected. We do have a bike rack for a re-pretty of site plan towards the front of the building. So we actually were putting, we could only fit so many into our basement. We had people bringing them to their rooms. We also have more people coming with kayaks and rollers that are as big as small cars. So the idea is to have the left-hand bay be for storage of our equipment, the right-hand bay for use of our guests supervised by our staff. So nobody would be going in and out without supervision. And then the upper level, we're referring to basically as flex space. We need a little bit of space for ourselves to have some meetings of staff. It would not be for anybody outside of staff. And the occasional, we had more, with the pandemic issue, we had more people needing more space to maybe have some privacy. needing more space to maybe have some privacy for, you know, if they're down here and they need to work with their computers. We have limited space within the inn, and it might be afford a possibility down the road of us having a few workstations or things like that. So we were showing on the second floor only a half bath, and we were showing just a center entrance between the two garage doors. This is not for vehicle storage. We could fit a van in there in the case of a heavy storm or snowstorm or something like that, but it's primarily not for that. It's a modest-sized building. It, I think it fits in very nicely with the wayside itself. I think you have a letter from our neighbor, the Frank and Carol Fethler, who we spoke with way back when we first started talking about them with the neighbors. We've had the wayside for 27 years. They, on their property, I believe, for 26. And we took into account their considerations, which I believe reflects in their letter of support. It's going to be shingle building. It's going to, for landscaping, it's going to be just beds on both sides. We do a landscaping plan because it'll just be shrubbery. A foundation planning, much like the rest of the wayside, which includes things like hydrangeas and ilex and holly. I didn't think it was, I was hoping it would not be necessary for us to do an actual landscape plan for such a small area. There's a small patio that shows on the westerly side overlooking the golf course. That's actually, it's just an outside space. It's consistent with the space that we have, some of our rooms, which you can see on the big building back there. The, the lighting, if you look, the front eve overhang is recessed lighting, shooting straight down onto the apron that abuts the parking lot. And the lanterns, there's two lanterns on either side of the slider on the rear upper section, which would also be small lights that would just reflect down. There really, I did propose a, a, a summary of the, the site work that needs to be done that would be included for any bonding. And I'm just going to grab that so I can go through it. We've recently had landscaping work. I consulted my landscaper. There's, this shows approximately 12 shrubs. We use them amount of $100 a piece, mulch miscellaneous. The major expense would be trenching, which is shown on the plan, the dotted line from the existing building along between the parking lot and the fence for the pool, where we would bring our utilities and hook into our existing sewer and electrical lines. Again, this, this entire building will be used for purposes of our own storage. It's not going to be open to the public. It's not going to be bringing in any new, it will not be for rent for businesses or anything like that, is strictly to handle the, what we need and the new needs of the wayside, which are, people are bringing more and more recreational stuff. And so that's it. I can answer any further questions on that. And as far as any of the, any legal issues, obviously, Mike Ford can address those.
Thank you, David. This is Catherine. Michael, did you want to speak first, or shall I just see if the board has any questions or comments?
Just very briefly, Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Ford.
All right. From a regulatory standpoint, this is a split lot. This is all covered in Alley's very thorough staff report, but the front is GB and the back is, is our 20. It has a long history of a number of special permits from zoning board of appeals over the years. One of those special permits was to allow the R20 portion of the lot to be utilized together with the GB portion of the lot to support the use allowed in the GB zone, which is the inn. As David indicated, the proposed use doesn't trigger the need for any new parking. It does have a bathroom. That's the reason that the, a half bath, the sewer is, is being run out there, and it will have electricity. We're not before the Old Kings Highway, though the front of the lot is within the jurisdiction of the historic district. The back isn't. However, Mr. Oppenheim has had an architect design the building, and his charge of the architect was to make sure that it was compatible with the other inn structures, and we believe that it is. It's a little under 850 square feet, and that's counting the overhangs in terms of building area. There's a 40-inch by 24-foot overhang in the front. Because we're increasing lot coverage on the lot, and the lot coverage is non-conforming, you might say, well, how can lot coverage be non-conforming where site coverage in the GB1 zone is 90%? And we're down in the high 20s? That's because an inn use, even in a GB1 zone, is 25%. And so we're non-conforming, and we'll be going up about a point, a percentage point in that. And that triggers us going back in and modifying the existing special permits for the inn. So there will be a stop to the zoning board of appeals, well. So from a regulatory standpoint, I don't believe there's any health issues. As I said, we're outside historic. Obviously, we're before you. Site plan review is required. We do think, we've touched all the bases for site plan, but there are a series of of comments in Alley's report, and David and I are happy to be responsive to any of them. And of course, we'll have a stop at the zoning board. Happy to answer questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ford and Mr. Oppenheim. Before I go to the board for questions and comments, I'd just like to review some of the points that are in Alley's very thorough staff report. I did want to just read the referral responses in particular. From the Health Department, I have reviewed the proposed plan for an accessory building at the site. The property is currently connected to town sewer. The additional office space may be, may be considered additional sewer flow and should be reviewed by the Sewer Department. From the Central Permitting Coordinator, I have no concerns for the proposed storage building. However, a plan of the proposed second floor should be provided. From the Police Department, I have no issues with this application. From the Fire Department, I just spoke to David Oppenheim, and I'm fine with what he is planning to do. And from the Parks and Recreation Department, there are no tree warden or park-related issues with this request. I'd also like to read, before we proceed, the letter from the Butters, Frank and Carol Fethteler from 38 BlackBerry Lane. They say, "My wife, Carol, and I have met with David Oppenheim regarding his plans to build a facility garage on the wayside property adjoining ours. Mr. Oppenheim explained the need for the building, gave us some preliminary plans, and asked us to highlight any design and layout concerns we might have. We have since been given the final plans and plot plan and are satisfied with the structure and layout. It is our understanding that this facility will be used for storage below and for office space on the upper floor and not for additional room rental. The design, architectural elements, and scale will fit well with the area, so we have no objections to the proposed plan as submitted." And that is from Frank and Carol Fethteler of 38 BlackBerry Lane, the Butters. And with that, why don't we go through and see if board members have questions for Mr. Oppenheim or Mr. Ford or any comments? So I'll start with Art Spru.
Okay, Catherine, I have some comments and some questions.
All right.
Several of them. I'll try to go through them one at a time. I think the, there is limited information on some of the existing systems in here. I believe there was a contra-plan that was provided that's helpful in understanding how this building is situated in there and how it will work from, in a proposed environment. The utilities, it appears that since there is a bath, you're talking about, you've got domestic water, perhaps fire protection line, I don't know, a sewer line, electrical, and maybe some telecom lines. That's quite a few underground utilities, and a single little line shown where they show it doesn't really represent that much. I did note when I was out there that, that is a row. I'm informed, there's some flowering shrubs. It's a row, it's rows of shereen. Those are nice shrubs, and I'm not sure Mr. Oppenheim would want to rip those out just to put utility lines in there. I mean, he may want to revisit the location of that and put those in the, in the parking spaces just so you retain those. They're pretty nice shrubs. But I'd like to see the utilities that are proposed and the actual locations and where they all are, only because there's other ground infrastructure that's out there, and I'm not sure it all works. There's a light fixture right at parking spot 52, so there's obviously some underground electrical that's in there providing service to that. So one is conflicting with another. The, let's see, the next thing I have is stormwater management. The existing space is all grassed area. It's pervious, so there's a significant amount of square footage of impervious area that's being created. I'm not sure where that's going. There's no mention of that. I think there needs to be some information provided on the stormwater management, how it's going to be mitigated. The, if they're going to put it into the existing system, can the existing system handle it? So there needs to be supporting calculations to be provided so that demonstrate that this has been mitigated in a proper way. I noticed when I was out there, there's like two garage doors and then a pedestrian entrance door to get to the upper, upper floor. There needs to be a way to get access, safe access to those garage areas, especially if you're going to be moving bikes in and out or kayaks. A walkway of some sort should be provided to get access there because there's only two parking spots in there. And I'm not sure that, you know, some of these canoes, kayaks, they get transported on some wheelies. Is there going to be a curb in front of where those parking spots are? Are they, is it going to be like a little ramp? A little bit more detail on that would be helpful to understand that. Whether, whether the access is a sidewalk between two of the existing parking spaces and adjustment there, or putting a, putting a sidewalk on the edge, one or the other should be provided to provide a means of accessing them so that you're not going to be damaging any of the cars that, that are sitting there parked. I, I guess the one question that I did have to David Oppenheim is the bike and kayak storage. Are you thinking of providing any rental there on this? Or is this strictly going to be for storage for the attend, anyone who is patrons of the Wayside Inn?
I'm, I'm prepared to answer those questions whenever you're ready.
Yes, please go ahead. Please go ahead, David. This is Catherine.
Okay, I'm going to start with, I'll start, I think I took notes. As far as the utilities go, you're right, it's, there's between the edge of the parking lot and the fence on the pool, there's rows of shereen. We've met with our landscaper, and he's assured us that all of those shrubs could be removed in balled, and then we could put our trench in to take whatever utilities are necessary. And then, once those are all in and conduit, the shrubs could be put right back in. That we've, we've nursed those plants for a long time, and we have the assurances that that could be taken care of. And that is the, the most logical route into the building because then we would be able to hook into our existed sewer, sewer line that goes out. We have a sewer connection for the front building and the back building. The, the electrical need minimal because it's really going to be lights and plugs. We're not doing anything of any consequence. The, the issue of, of the drainage and things like this, there'll be, there's roof drainage, obviously, and that'll go into, there'll be a gutter on each side of the building. There will only be the need for a single downspout. There is a dry well in one portion between the, it's the west side of the pool fence and the building. It might be able to go into that, or it could easily either go into the existing parking lot drainage, which has been there. I installed this 27 years ago. We had the parking lot redone two years ago. We've never had any water whatsoever in the parking lot. So for the minimum amount of roof, roof area, there'd be no problem. Or if necessary, we could put dry well, a dry well that could be on one side of the apron or the other without any problem whatsoever. As far as rentals, we have no interest in renting, and that's not the interest at all. We, that's not something we, we have any interest in being involved in. There are plenty of places in Chatham and in the various other places that rent things. So that's, we rent rooms and we provide food, and that's, that's what our intention is.
This is Catherine. Thank you, Mr. Oppenheim. Arthur, did you have some more questions?
There was one other question, Mr.
Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
He talked about, I was out there when Mr. Spru was there, and he had a very good suggestion about the access to the front of the building pedestrian. And when, when he and I were both standing there, I think that I'm correct in saying to the west of parking space 48, there would be room to put a walkway that could connect directly to the apron that's under the overhang. The alternative would be to slide the lines for parking lot 48 down three feet, and that would allow you to have, I, I measured afterwards approximately a 30, over, in excess of three-foot walkway, right to the center of the, with, between the two, between the two garage doors where the center entrance is to the second floor. I thought that was a very, very good suggestion. And if you wanted to make that part of the approval process, I would be happy to, to agree to that.
Yes. So adding a sidewalk. Arthur, did you want to continue?
Yeah, just one other thing. Then underneath the general notes, it states, Note 1, "The final location of underground utility shall be determined in consultation with the DPW." I certainly don't mind that the applicant is in consultation with the DPW on, on any points that would be helpful to them. But the planning board is the approving authority on this, not the DPW. They are not an agent of, of the, of the board unless we so desire that to be. So the information on the underground utilities really needs to be part of the plan that we approve. So I, I just want to make that, make sure that's, that's clear associated with any approval that we, we provide. And that's all, all the comments I have, Catherine. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. And I'm just going to ask, we had a couple of suggestions. I also think the pedestrian access is a really good idea, the sidewalk. And there were a couple of suggestions, one slightly to the north of parking space 48, the other in between parking space 49 and 48. Mr. Oppenheim or Arthur, do you have a preference for the location of that sidewalk? Seems to me you would need another sidewalk under the overhang if you're coming in from the, the edge of parking space 48.
Yeah, my, my only comment on that is, is, you know, I, I believe those parking places are for all the patrons. And I, I certainly wouldn't want my vehicle scratched with somebody coming in there with a kayak or, or a bike or that. I would want them to be in a separate sidewalk away from as much as I could of a car. That would be my preferences, is to create something as, as separate as possible. So the one at the end would be a little bit better from that perspective.
Right.
My point of view, that's all.
Thank you, Arthur. Mr. Oppenheim? Yes.
Yeah. The, the, the parking is not just for the patrons, it's also for staff. We have two vehicles, a van and a, and another vehicle, and it's our intent to use parking spaces 48 and 49 for those vans right now. They're parked in that area usually anyways. So I, if, if, what I'd like to do is be able to, you know, part of me thinks it's, it should be in the, between those two because both those spaces will be, in, in fact, occupied by our own vehicles. I won't say 100% of the time, but certainly 95% of the time. So it may make the most sense to have the, you know, a, a direct route which basically between 48 and 49, right to the which basically between 48 and 49, right to the center door, especially if someone were walking and going upstairs. And that would also bring you to what we show as a fairly wide apron where people could, could walk in. I also want to make a comment that no one will, no, none of our, our patrons will be going into this building unescorted at any time. Uh, we will have set hours when, when this thing is, when people can pick up their bicycles, drop off their bicycles and we will manage this, uh, as, as we do with the entire property, uh, we take very good care. That said, Mr. Spru's idea to the north side of 48 may end up being the best. What, what we probably like to be able to do, um, is if, if you'd like, we could come back at a later time with, 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 which we feel is the best or, or go over it with Ally and she could talk to, whatever, whatever's on that. But it was an excellent suggestion and it's, it's a suggestion I agree with. I'm just not, at this point, sure which is the best.
This is Catherine.
I'd like to have the, like, a little bit of the flexibility to choose one or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheim. This is Catherine Halpern. I just wanted to comment, I do think, I agree that it would, it would be necessary and I think helpful to have clear pedestrian access and to just think it through. You also need some space in front of those doors which would allow people to take out bikes, take out kayaks and then get them to wherever you place the sidewalk in a convenient way without, you know, without bumping into cars and so on and get them out of that area to where they need to go. So that is, I think that is definitely something we should add. Arthur, did you have any more comments?
Uh, no, that would be it. Um, it's, it's, it's certainly, um, a, a really nice development that's there and this just helps enhance it a little bit more. So I'm, you know, definitely supporting all of this. I'm just looking out for what's, what's, uh, best for, uh, for the town and is part of our, our role.
Thank you, Arthur. And Warren Chain, do you have questions, comments for Mr. Ford or Mr. Oppenheim?
Well, this is Warren, uh, David and, uh, Michael. I, I too support this, uh, this proposal. Um, my comments were generally on the same areas that have already been commented on, uh, particularly the, the parking spaces and the fact that if you're going to be, uh, bringing things, snow blowers were mentioned, bikes, kayaks, and who knows what people may bring next. Um, it would seem to me that, um, those concerns have been raised and, um, the, the suggestions I think are all useful. I don't object to any of the possibilities. Um, but I would suggest that, um, given the nature of these garage bays as being used for storage, um, uh, you might wish to consider having a, uh, an access door, um, on the side of the building. Um, they're reasonably deep. I don't know if they'll be connected or not. That's not clear to me from the plan, but, um, for example, you've, if all of a sudden you have tables and chairs and whatever that you wish to get out and there's full of snow blowers, kayaks and bicycles or something in front of them, um, it might be convenient for all concern, um, if there were at least, uh, a modest, uh, entrance way from, uh, what would be the east side of the building. On the west side, I think it's probably into the hill, but, um, just to make it easier to get in there, um, as well as potentially to get things out. Um, I do think that it's, uh, also worth considering having the curbing on, uh, really parking spaces 48 and 9 perhaps be converted to a ramp such that if you have snow blowers and other things with wheels on them and/or bicycles for that matter, it would just be easier. And again, this would work well if there were the, um, uh, the sidewalk or pedestrian access between, uh, spaces 48 and 9. It could perhaps be just a ramp as well, which would just make it easier to, uh, to get wheeled vehicles in and out. Um, I think Ally mentioned in her plan too, that if, uh, that there's no mention of having any waste disposal, uh, in the area, uh, i.e. a dumpster or something like that, but if there is, uh, and again, to the extent the upper stairs is used as office space and stuff, that might be, um, might be considered in the future, then I think the issue of where it would be placed and the fact that it ought to be, um, enclosed, um, would need to be addressed. Um, other than that, I, I support the proposal and, and think that it would be a big, um, a big plus to, to the, uh, to the, to the, the people that stay there, to be able to have that, uh, capability to bring everything in the kitchen sink with them and have a place to put it other than their own.
May I, may I respond? Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead, David.
We, we did look at putting a, a side entrance door, um, and, and reached the conclusion that it wasn't necessary because no one will be going in and out of there, again, unaccompanied by staff. We have a full maintenance staff, um, which obviously increases in the summer when we're busiest and, but we have a year-round staff. And trying to, you know, bring something out, uh, sideways and things like that, we didn't feel it was necessary. The garage doors are only eight feet wide as opposed to a normal garage door, which is nine because we don't plan on vehicle storage or things like that. As far as the, the rubbish which did come up and I, and I apologize for not mentioning earlier, we have, uh, behind, uh, the front building, uh, a very, very large dumpster which is enclosed and, um, it services, you know, all of our, uh, housekeeping staff. Everything is bagged and brought into that. So we felt this, there certainly is no need for us to have any additional, um, dumpster space. Uh, it's, we, in the summer, it is emptied on a daily basis and off-season, um, but pretty much off-season, whenever we're open, it's pretty much every day. And again, our staff, um, is, is, is able to, to handle that. We did look at the idea of, of building a ramp and having it be a little, we, we prefer it aesthetically. We have cobblestone apron and the cobblestones stick up approximately two, maximum of three inches in places. And we felt that the type of equipment, since we've been dealing with it and, and quite frankly, dragging it in and out of the buildings in one form or another, um, that we didn't feel, we, we felt that it really wasn't necessary. It would be a little easier, but we'd rather keep the aesthetics, um, and the consistency of the parking lot. So your, your suggestion is, I, I wouldn't argue that it would, might make it a little bit of easier with something with wheels, but we feel, um, that we're well able to handle that. And if there was anything of any size of any con- consequence, which occasionally we do run into, we have wedges that we use, uh, you know, landscapers often use wedges to, to bring them, their moors out and get them up onto the lawns so that they don't interfere with the cobble. So from an aesthetic standpoint and, and our own understanding how we're going to functionally use this, we, we think we're okay the way, the way it's laid out.
Thank you, David. This is Catherine. Warren, did you have any further comments or shall I go on to the next board member?
Um, only one other comment that, um, there was some reference that in the future and the second floor might end up being a, a nice place to have workstations, uh, for people working, um, remotely, et cetera. And don't know to what extent that it's, uh, appropriate now to consider what kinds of wifi arrangements and other, um, uh, media access portals and outlets and so on might, uh, might need to be put in there. Um, and to what extent that would affect, uh, the way that facility operates. It sounded if it's staff only and, um, residents would have guided access only, but to the extent that you have people that are there using it as an office facility, then, um, the security aspect of that would seem to come into play. But that's just a comment about something that doesn't even exist yet in the proposal, so.
I, I think to answer that, we, we plan on, on allowing for any future use like that in terms of the rough wiring and things like that, but our, our plans at this particular point in time, even, even laying out this project, we ran out of space with our limited office space to, to have something out on a table that we didn't have to put away every time we were looking at it. So we, we definitely see this, our, our immediate intent going forward is primarily for our own staff to use, uh, for project management and things like that and, um, uh, and, and, you know, it, but we, we are seeing sort of an evolution that's going on. We don't know how far it's going to go. So your suggestion about certainly allowing for these types of things with our rough wiring and things like that, uh, certainly is something we, we plan on doing.
This is Catherine. Thank you, David. Um, the only question I would ask, and I don't see that it does, but would any future uses that are not, um, being considered in this proposal affect the site plan in any way? Uh, and I don't particularly see that it would because what the planning board is looking at tonight is the site plan approval. Mr. Oppenheim, do you want to comment on that?
Uh, yeah. And Mike can also, I'm sorry. We have, there will be no additional people on site. Um, there are no additional vehicles. The, the two vehicles that we have will be using the spaces they always use, which is 48 and 49. Occasionally they use 46 and 47. Um, we, we are not renting this space for any reason. It is not going to bring any additional clients to the, to the property. Um, it really is about being able to manage our, our own, our own equipment and the, what we're now seeing is people are, they're traveling differently with bicycles and, and kayaks and doing much more outdoor stuff than when we bought this place 27 years ago. And, uh, it's changed and, and, and again, this will make it much easier for us rather than trying to get things down solid stairways. And so I don't think there is anything that requires anything for additional parking or changes in the site plan. And Mike can address it from a legal standpoint.
Thank you, David. Mike, do you want to address the question? Sure, go ahead.
In response specifically to your observation, Madam Chair, I was just going to suggest that we put a provision in the application that says no public access to the building. We anticipated that might be a condition in the plan to do with approval. It would seem to me that that's the guiding principle, to answer your question. If in fact, public access becomes available to this building in any way other than it being used as part of the inn, then I could see perhaps to change in the site plan if that would create perhaps a different parking. And that's my condition.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. It was a little hard to hear you, but I think we heard the gist of it. And again, I'm, this is, again, this is Catherine Halpern. I'm just responding to Warren Chain's idea that possibly in future, the second floor is opened up to guests to use wifi and have, you know, uh, office space up there. But again, I don't see that that will create any change in the site plan requirements specifically. You will, especially if we put in this sidewalk, there's, it looks like there will be adequate access. Um, so that would be, I'm just saying that what we need to consider as a planning board is if any of these considerations affect the site plan. Um, so thank you. I think with that, we should go to Tom Gagin. If you have any questions or comments for Mr. Oppenheim or Mr. Ford?
Tom Gagin, Catherine, I have no questions or concerns at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Gagin. Uh, Bob Dubus.
Uh, Bob Dubus here. The only concern that I had, uh, when I first looked at this was the neighbors and the neighbors seem, uh, all set with what's going on, so I have no questions, uh, and no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Dubus. Uh, and Bob Worchafter?
Yes, uh, Bob Worchafter here. Um, I, I guess my first question relates to the, to the three-foot area, uh, and you're putting your trucks in 48 and 49. If you put the, I, I, I'm just a little concerned that some things you're going to be moving in are bigger than three feet wide and, uh, whether three feet is enough, but I, I'll let you, uh, think about that one. My bigger concern is that if you're going to occupy the second floor, how are you heating and cooling it? And I don't see any compressors or heat pump, uh, or anything in the site plan that would allow you to keep that building occupied.
I think, I, can I answer that, Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead and please be sure to say your name before you speak, Mr. Ford. Or is that Mr. Oppenheim? Thank you.
Oppenheim again. Um, two things, as far as the three feet, again, these are going to be managed, so if we had anything of large scale going in and out, we would obviously move one of our own vehicles. That's why we use those two spaces for our own vehicles, so we wouldn't have to bother a guest to move the vehicle. So if anything larger was going in that, um, didn't, wasn't easily going through the three feet, then we, we, it might actually be closer to 42 inches. Um, that would not be an issue. I think you will see on the west elevation between the building and the pool, you will see in the middle, there is a condenser shown between the shrubs and that is for one of the ductless, uh, heating systems. So we have allowed, and that was one of the requests of our neighbors, that if we were going to have any sort of a mechanical for, for heat or air conditioning, that it not be on their side of the building. And that was easily accomplished by putting it on the opposite side of the building, the east side of the building. And I think you can see, it doesn't show in the elevations, it does show on the site plan, I believe, roughly in the center of the east side of the bill, right there, yes. And, and that would be one of those, you know, the ductless systems that go up with the wall hung units or, um, and that would be the condenser there. So that would protect, and that was one of the Fletchler's, Fletchler's concerns is they didn't want to listen to a compressor on their side and that's why they were, they were pleased when we put it on the, uh, pool side of the building.
So, so that's great. I did not see that. It's sort of hidden in there.
Yeah.
And my assumption is because you're planning to oc- occupy this, that it will actually be built to, to code for a, an occupied building and not for a, a warehouse or a storage facility.
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam.
Okay. This is Catherine. Thank you, Bob Worchafter. So we'll go to Roger Griffin. Do you have any questions or comments for David Oppenheim or Mike Ford?
No, Madam Chair, I'm pretty, I'm in support of the plan and I think everybody has brought, you know, we've already talked about most of the issues that I would have any concern with and think especially knowing that, uh, company vehicles are in, you know, 48 and 49, I think all the concerns can be, you know, they'll be able to take care of that because they have control of the vehicles. No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so let me just take a look here. Yes. So this is Catherine Halpern speaking. So we now would want to take a formal action. Uh, we could take a vote to approve the site plan with conditions. Uh, we may want to add some conditions. Arthur, I'm, I'm just thinking of some of the points that you have brought out. Uh, would you like to add conditions to the conditions that Ally has so very well summarized for us in the staff report, um, that you want to see on the final plans, the details of the utilities, uh, and also that we determine the best place for the sidewalk for pedestrian access to the entrance that is on the, the side of the parking spaces here, number 48 and 49. Um, Arthur, I'm going to let you speak to this.
Sure. Um, I, I think on the utilities, uh, you know, it's, it's always helpful if you're showing, um, the, the different types of utilities. So if we're talking about a sewer line, a water line, um, a, um, electrical line, um, you know, just to show that where all of those are being proposed and it's sort of hard to tell the type of utilities that's being proposed in that, um, in that, um, pathway there. Uh, just to, that, that they should be identified of which underground utilities are being proposed. Uh, David Oppenheimer referred to the stormwater to put it in dry wells. I think that's a good alternative on this. This is a small residential-type building and, uh, to use dry wells as a means to mitigate some of the flow. I think that would be certainly fine to do where we can get away from the issue of any kind of stormwater-related, uh, number crunching on this, uh, because of, uh, with that approach. Um, and I think the third thing was, of course, the sidewalk.
The sidewalk, yes.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to one or the other. I think the, the, whether the sidewalk is, uh, next to 48 or between 48 and 49, either one of those is fine. I think some, I think everybody's, including, uh, Mr. Oppenheimer is looking for those, uh, one of the, other of those. I have no opinion one way or another, as long as there is some way to get in and out of there. Uh, I, I didn't realize that 48 and 49 get used by their own vans and vehicles. That makes a lot of sense. That means that it's a lot of the issues I had associated with that sort of go away. So if there were three- So if there were three conditions associated with that, they don't have to be really complicated or anything, but I, I would be supportive of this even today.
All right. So, but we want to add those three conditions, that a sidewalk is added to give easy pedestrian access to the entrance. And what are we calling this? We're calling this really the west side, right?
Oh, that's, that's the south side, I think.
Is it the south side?
Southwest.
It's, yeah, southwest.
It's southwest side, yes. So that's one condition that we want to add. And we want to add that the, the details of the types of utilities are clearly delineated on the final plan. And then we want to add the, the stormwater. How, and Arthur, I'm going to let you word that one. And we can make it very simple.
Yeah, a dry, a dry well that David had referred to, that certainly would be reasonable for this particular type of, of building.
Okay, great. That's shown on the plan. So I'll add those three conditions. Ally, are you good with that?
I am good with that. I do believe there is some discussion about the width of the pedestrian access. I think it's three feet, but I'm not sure if we landed on anything. So if there's, if there's no width, that's fine, but I just want to make sure if there is a width, we should add that.
Yes.
Want to make a suggestion?
Yes, please go ahead, David.
David Oppenheim, not less than three feet?
That's, that sounds good to me. And the board will vote on this, so we'll, we'll hear from the board. And we're leaving the determination of the exact placement of that sidewalk open. I agree with Arthur that it could be either in between 48 and 49 or to the northish of 48. And it's, it's really up to you how you see it functioning, because it seems that usually that sidewalk is going to be used by your guests when you've got your own vehicles parked in 48 and 49, so that they have easy access. When you have something bigger, the staff will be there and they'll be, you'll be moving your vehicles out of those parking spaces, and that space is going to be more open anyway. So, anyway, but I'll let you think that through, how you're actually going to function and what would be the best placement. So, all right. And then the only other sort of open issue about the conditions, we have four conditions. We've added three conditions, and we have four that Ally's outlined in her staff report. So there'll be a total of seven conditions. Condition number four in Ally's staff report is a request for a performance bond. And we would, if we want to request a performance bond, we need to determine the amount. And Mr. Oppenheim has given us the cost estimate for the, the landscaping and site work to be $10,000. He has in there a $5,000 allowance for unanticipated expenses. So I'm going to propose that.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Dubus, yes?
Bob Dubus here. Under the circumstances of this being the wayside inn, this being here for 27 years, I'm going to suggest to the board that we waive the requirement for a performance bond, considering that I don't believe that David would leave the site unsightly, being where it is and what it is, because if it was unsightly, it probably would deter some of the guests from being there. So I honestly don't believe that we need a performance bond, looking at how it's contained and taken care of as is.
All right. This is Catherine. Thank you, Mr. Dubus. I think that's an excellent point. Yes, is this Tom?
Tom Gagin.
Yes. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, I would. I'd like to reinforce what Bob has just said. And any of the times I've been in that area, you could probably eat off the parking lot if you so decided, fry an egg a couple of days this month. I think it's, I think what Bob is saying, and I agree with him, I think it's really overkill.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gagin. Why don't we just do a very quick poll of the board about whether we should just simply waive the performance bond, and then we can take a vote on our approval with conditions, and then we would have six conditions? So we've already heard from Tom Gagin and Bob Dubus. So can I ask, Arthur, do you feel we should ask for a performance bond?
Art Spru, no, I'm okay with waiving it for this particular situation.
Thank you, Arthur. And Warren Chain?
Catherine, this is Warren Chain. Bob, beating to it, I was going to suggest that we waive it, so I'm definitely in favor of waiving it.
Great, thank you. And Bob Wertschfter?
This is Bob Wertschfter. I'm in favor of waiving it. I'm wondering whether we can vote before we've heard if there are any public comments?
Public? No, I'll ask for public comments, and thank you for the reminder. And Roger Griffin, how do you feel about the performance bond?
I definitely agree we should pass.
All right, great. And this is Catherine Halpern. I'm also great with waiving the performance bond. I agree, it's a beautiful property and always extremely well-kept. So before we take a formal vote, I have been reminded I should ask for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience, or I should say, connected to our remote meeting, who would like to speak about this project or who has questions or comments for Mr. Ford or Mr. Oppenheim? And I'll wait a few minutes, because sometimes people have their microphones muted. I don't hear from anyone in the public. So with that, I think it, it would be that we're ready to go to our formal vote. And what I will suggest to the board is that what we would want is a motion to approve this site plan with conditions. And we've out, we've, we have waived the performance bond. We've added three conditions, so there will be six conditions as stated. So if I could have a motion to approve the site plan with the six conditions as stated to construct a new accessory structure to be used as a facility management building at 512 Main Street, based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the protective zoning bylaw with the, with the six conditions that we have outlined, do I have a motion to that effect?
This is Art Spru. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Arthur. And do I have a second to that motion?
Catherine, this is Warren Chain. I'll second.
Thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Wertschfter, approve.
Thank you. And Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, and I also approve. So thank you very much, Mr. Ford and Mr. Oppenheim.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Again, this is Catherine Halpern. And before we move to basically adjourn the meeting, I again am going to ask if there's anyone connected to the call in the public who would like to comment on any of the matters that we've discussed this evening. I'll wait a minute or so in case someone's unused.
Madam Chairman, this is Bob Dubus.
Yes.
I have a question, and it's, could be out of, out of context or whatever, but are they, are they not going to the Board of Appeals or something like that with this, the wayside with their new building?
Catherine, yes, I'll let Ally respond. I understand they are, but Ally, would you like to respond to that for us?
Sure. Yep, Bob, this is Ally. They are going to the Zoning Board of Appeals for an amendment, I believe, to their existing special permit. I don't believe that a hearing date has been set yet, but they will have to go to the ZBA for this application.
All right. Would it not be possible that we could maybe put a positive note on, on that for them? Or, or did they not ask for one?
They normally don't ask for, or they do ask for comments, and we probably will receive a request for comments in the future. I don't believe that they have submitted an application yet to the Zoning Board of Appeals, but when they do, we'll be asked for a comment. And at that point, if the board chooses, we could send a positive recommendation.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. This is Catherine. Thank you, Bob. So I think with that, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Bob Dubus, adjourn.
All right. And a second to the motion.
Tom Gagin.
Second.
Great. So for the record, we had two people second. We could go with Tom Gagin. He was half a second ahead. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, and I also approve that we adjourn the meeting. And we should note the time is 6:12 PM. Thank you all very much for your participation, and we'll see you at our next meeting.